Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, October 29th, 2024. It is 9:02 a.m. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. Vice Chair Fornier is excused this morning. We have Commissioner Gary Edwards to my left, and Commissioners Carleen and Mahia and Emily Klaus Zoom, County Manager, Leonard Hernandez, and Assistant County Managers Robin Campbell, Rob Gilder, and Josh Cummings. Public virtual attendance available on our Thurston County YouTube channel. We're here until noon to review two draft agendas and cover some standing items. First up is a review of the draft agenda for this afternoon's meeting, October 29th, which will be called to order at 2 p.m. And we have several changes to the previous draft, and Clerk of the Board has summarized those changes, both on the draft as well as on a cover sheet that we have here in the boardroom. Pledge of Allegiance, we may need to change that because I think Vice Chair Fornier will be at his other meeting that he's at, so.
Give it to Commissioner Edwards.
You're the boss.
Okay. Commissioner Edwards will then lead a pledge of allegiance. We can do... Commissioner Mahia, would you be willing to do a land acknowledgement section?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we'll have opportunity for the public to address the board, and County Managers' update. Any county manager updates we expected?
Yes. I'll just provide a quick update that our Human Resource Department, along with our Commissioners' Office, is working on human resource policies, some updates and some new policies being forward to the board, and that short update.
Okay. Questions for County Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we have consent items, A through V. This might be a record. We have 3A, Sheriff Department, reimbursement contract with City of Tenino.
Chair, I'd be... Do you want to discuss the adding of the inter-local agreement?
Sure.
Pastuary to the agenda, or do you want to wait till the end? It's up to you.
Let's cover our sheriff's items, since Under Sheriff Pierceall is here, and then we'll jump to that.
Perfect.
Good morning. What we're here for is to get approval of a contract with the City of Tenino for a three-year contract where the sheriff's office is responsible for covering their priority one and two calls, which is their highest priority calls from the hours of midnight till 6 a.m. Tenino will reimburse us or pay us $25,000 per year for each of the three years for that.
Questions for Under Sheriff? We covered this last week.
No questions.
I'm seeing any?
Good to go.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Okay, so you're suggesting that we jump to one of the additions from last week, which is?
It's actually not on the agenda yet, Chair.
Okay.
The discussion is whether or not to add it to the agenda. There were some questions that Commissioners asked related to, is it legal for the county to use the stormwater funds, and then also to get an update on the stormwater fund, and an overview of the status of that fund and the health of that fund. And so our legal representative Travis has provided some email correspondence outlining his perspective. He hasn't been able to provide the written brief as Commissioner Fornier asked for. That'll take about another week or two for him to complete. But in his overview summary, his response is that, yes, it is allowable, and there's a certain framework for it to be allowed. Then our internal auditor, Brendan Weber, has drafted an overview perspective on the use of those funds, and at the same time, an auditor team is working with the State Auditor's Office to ask the question, just to make sure all our bases are covered. The information from the State Auditor's Office, I think it's still forthcoming. I got an update from Diana Benson, I think, yesterday, so as soon as she hears back, she'll let us know. It could be in this morning, I'm not sure. But the perspective from Brendan Weber was that, you know, there's a process that stormwater funds, when those fees are assessed and come through, that there's a process that those funds go through in order to be eligible for different projects. And to summarize his two-and-a-half-page review, that the county should consider going through some type of process if, to add the issues project into those list of projects in order for them to be eligible. And then to... Unless there's any questions, I can speak to the stormwater fund, and we have our Public Works team here. If you want to come and join us, just in case there are any technical questions, asking for... Tim, you two, why don't you come on up?
Thank you.
As they're coming to get settled in, we'll just go ahead and allow you to introduce yourselves.
Jennifer Walker, the Public Works Director.
Karen, who's the Public Works Assistant Director.
And Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager.
So Board members, I'll start with a high-level overview of the stormwater fund, and some of you may know this in good detail, but they're effectively two different funds, one for capital projects, the other one for operations and maintenance. And then looking at the, what the county takes in annually, and how those funds are distributed, there's a couple different components for awareness. That operation and maintenance costs for the stormwater fund, just like every other dynamic in the county, costs are going up. A lot of those operation and maintenance costs are tied to staff and facilitation and overhead of projects. And so right now, while there's sufficient balance in the fund, when they look out five years, they start to show that that fund starts to deplete itself. And they're contemplating, Public Works team, discussing with the board, the need to look at assessment of fees, to discuss should they raise the fees to continue to keep up the inflation costs, and the cost for colas, et cetera. And in the capital part of the fund, they do have a balance of several million dollars in that fund, partly because there's some vacancies in key positions to get work done. They're working to fill those positions, and as soon as those positions are filled, they'll start to draw down that fund in several large projects, which will diminish the balance. And so because the ILA payment increases over time, when we add that into the operation maintenance component fund, it just causes that fund to go into the red sooner, which wouldn't necessitate either dialing down the contribution to capital projects, or increasing fees to cover some of those costs. So it's a bit of a tricky response because it's not a yes or no answer we can provide to you. Yes, it can, or no, it can. It's more of a, it depends on how that fund is, the disposition of that fund, and what direction that Commissioners give. But based on the current program that they have, and I believe there's some studies that you all are undergoing to look at different projects and different things. Tim, do you want to speak to that at all? I don't remember the name of the study that you're working on.
Yeah, so we are approaching the end of a roughly two-year effort to perform a stormwater comprehensive study. That is done with consultant Herrera Consultants. That is a look at our entire stormwater utility and the programs within it, kind of through several lenses. Number one, what, are there any gaps that we can become aware of in fulfilling our regulatory obligations under the permit, but also our capital program and what our goals are for that, what staffing requirements we may need to move all of that forward. So that comprehensive study should be complete early spring of 2025, and based upon the recommendations of that study, that would be closely followed by some kind of a rate study for the utility.
And so Commissioners, if we add the ILA payment into the operations side, there is a concern that the fund would go into the red sooner than it currently is anticipated, and the rates may need to be assessed quicker. What staff have told me is that right now, their commitment, staff's commitment to keeping the permit going and doing all the regulatory requirements, they are, they have the staff to do that, but there's a lot of demands on them, and they wouldn't want to see any type of reduction in that area. So then the other opportunity is looking at the capital side, and if the capital side were to absorb the ILA payment, then it could mean that some of the projects in the out years would not be able to be addressed. They have not done the full analysis to determine which project, so we're not able to say to you today, it's this project, this project, or this project. But because the payment balloons up into the out years, it could have an impact on that fund's health and viability.
Can we see, like, how much money is generated by stormwater fees every year?
Yeah. The team has that information. They can share that with you.
I think that was another piece of what we were wanting to see.
Sure. Karen, do you want to walk through that?
Sure, yeah. So we bring in stormwater fees exclusively. We bring in just under seven million dollars. And of that, about 1.85 million is specifically in the rates earmarked for capital improvement programs. So those items that are on our capital facilities plan, and that money is transferred then from our maintenance and operations fund into our stormwater capital fund that was just discussed. So that gives us, I guess I didn't do the math right off the top of my head, but, you know, just under six million dollars available of the stormwater fees for the maintenance and operations.
Commissioner Edwards?
I guess, I'm going to try and use a simple statement, I guess, that might say it all. It looks like we're trying to rob from Peter to pay Paul, and we don't have adequate funding in so many different areas of the county budget. I mean, we can't take adequate care of our staff to keep up with 20% inflation over the last three or four years. I don't know how we could go into this funding source not knowing exactly what projects are going to be reprioritized or not reprioritized. And there's two issues, I think, that are yet to be played out. One of them is the contribution to the stormwater fund by the county, which is quite different than the contribution by state highways through the county. And it has to do with the width of the county roadways and how much we're being asked to contribute based on that. And apparently, that width is erroneous as to what we have been doing. And I'm going to use Cooper Road as an example. I think it says Cooper Road is 40 feet wide or something, 23 feet. I don't know the numbers here in front of me, but there's some discrepancy about what we're paying in, and if it's the valid amount that we're paying in. And how much are we going to have to pay back if we end up in a situation that the auditor says we have to pay it back? So we haven't even had this discussion that I'm aware of here at the county board yet. But that's, that's kind of the main concern, that we've still got things coming. And then possibly, we're in a situation where we were told several years ago or something that we were okay on expending funds here at the atrium, and then the State Auditor came along, and we got a finding from that saying that we were not okay, and we did it improperly. So I don't see why we want to gamble on going into something like this if we can't come up with some other fund that it doesn't deplete. I guess, I guess we could prioritize the lake over the roads and take more money out of the road department, I guess. But I don't think that makes good sense either. So just, there's questions yet to be answered, I feel.
Questions for the team from anyone else? No? Okay, thank you. So we have a decision, I guess, in order, this was on the agenda two weeks ago. It was removed and intended to be placed, or at least some of us intended it to be placed on today's agenda. Questions were asked, as many answers were produced as possible, and here we are. So I guess we have a decision to make, whether to move this forward today or to discuss some other approach to this question. Commissioner Mahia?
I think you heard me two weeks ago, you know, I'm ready to move forward on this item. I believe that just based on this information, it gives us the opportunity to kind of wait for the auditor's decision. You know, we're doing our due diligence to be sure that, you know, this is an adequate fund. And so just given that information and Travis's response, I am ready to move forward.
I feel comfortable putting it on today's agenda. That gives us another opportunity to discuss it this afternoon. Personally, I, two weeks ago, was one of the Commissioners who asked for a little bit more time, and I appreciate being given additional two weeks to look into this. I've had a ton of conversations about this over the last two weeks and learned pretty much as much as I possibly can. And I think that it's really important to have it on the agenda today. So I'm there.
Okay. I also agree with that. I'll, I have a lot of reasons for that that I'll go over this afternoon, but at this juncture, it sounds like we have three votes to put it on today's agenda. Commissioner Edwards?
And I would be a dissenting vote on that issue, but recognizing the majority.
Okay.
Well, added to our item.
Okay, so that's a department item. We go back to the agenda? Okay. And that will be 3B is up next, Superior Court Contract, Superior Court GAL and Court Visitor Contract.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Kristin Jensen, Superior Court, and the court is asking that the Board approve us entering a contract with Cynthia Johnson. Ms. Johnson performs services for the court as a guardian ad litem and as a court visitor entitled 26 and Title 11 cases. We're asking for the contract for up to $70,000 per year.
Any questions for Kristin on this contract? Nope, thank you so much. I think we're good to go.
Thank you.
Central Services requests for qualification for on-call architect and engineering professional consultant services. Come Central Services team.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bruce Robbin, our Central Services Director.
And Rick Thomas, Central Services Project Planning Manager. And Commissioners, today we want to ask for your authorization for us to post a request for qualifications for architect and engineering professional consultant services. This is a contract that will allow us to choose probably five to eight or nine different consultants to help us with our design program for our capital improvements projects. Again, this is something that's very similar to what Public Works has done. The idea being that we would enter into two-year base contracts with three additional one-year contracts. There are options to give us a total of five years of these contracts. And just as a note, as far as the funding goes, the funding will come from various sources depending upon the specific projects as the projects come up in the future. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions for Rick? Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
3D, Central Services as well, resolution for purchase of Horizon Connect Reveal.
Yes, this is a request to enter into a contract with Verizon through the GSA contract. We have a current contract with them using NASPO. This is a cost savings to the county by switching to the GSA rate. And along with this, Verizon is switching its platform from our network fleet to reveal similar service to the county. Is there any questions?
I don't remember this last week. Any questions? Nope.
Okay, thank you, Bruce.
3E, Commissioners' Item, Setting a Public Hearing for Thurston Conservation District's System of Rates and Charges. This is a new item.
It's a new item, and we really appreciate Thurston Conservation District's patience with us. We sent a brief out with the information and the rates. I think what I would want to note here is they're asking for a 10-year timeframe in this proposal, and I believe that there's not much changing to the rates that they proposed then. And, yeah, been in touch with Sarah Moorhead, the Executive Director, who would be available to answer any questions at a future date.
So the 10-year duration is embedded in this item as it's proposed?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Is, so we're not going to have any information coming in from the Conservation District on this item today? Is that, it sounds like I'm hearing?
I thought she was, was she available today to come out today? We did send her correspondence, which we can resend any Commissioners that need it, but it gives a very good outline of the documentation that she provided.
But, but if this is going to be on the consent calendar...
It's setting the hearing for November 25th. This initiates that.
But there's no, but all that'll be ironed out at a later date.
Yeah, we have them both, yeah. This is setting the calendar.
Yeah, she'll be able, she will be present when we bring this. This one's going to come off cycle because of the meeting on the 19th that was canceled. So this one will come on Monday, the 25th, and she is committed to being here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, okay, great. Good, okay. Next up is 3F, CPED, Set a Public Hearing for 2025 to '30 Capital Improvement Program.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is not a release last week. It's for setting a public hearing as part of the budget process for the annual adoption of the capital improvement program. In this case, it'll be from 2025 to 2030. An ebrief was sent out October 18th, along with the planning commissions' letter and recommendation. I'll be answering any questions you have before setting the public hearing.
Nope, straight forward. Thank you.
Great.
We'll go on to G, Set a Public Hearing on Less Restrictive Alternative Community Housing Code Update.
Yeah, this was also discussed last week. The last briefing was held on October 2nd, where we got a thumbs up to the public hearing. And this would be adopting code updates to implement less restrictive alternative housing by use and permit review.
Same as what we had in our works, last work session. Okay, any questions on this?
My only question on this is, we set the public hearing here, and then after public comment or other comment to the board, we can make adjustments to that if we feel necessary before we enact that. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
And this is one of the development code updates, which means that you are not locked into only making one decision a year. So if you decide to have a follow-up work session, you will have time to accommodate that.
Okay, thank you.
And then we've got a third, CPED Public Hearing, Rescheduling Public Hearing for Ag Zoning Update.
Yeah, so this was a public hearing that the Board scheduled for November 19th. As you know, we are no longer having a board meeting on November 19th.
Because of the Walsack Conference.
Yep, so we're just asking that the Board reschedule this one, and we will re-notice it for November 25th.
So we'll have several public hearings on the 25th. Okay?
Yep.
Sounds like we're good to go?
Thank you.
I is Human Resources Resolution to Eliminate Senior Appraiser Position. I know we reviewed this one last week. Is there... Maria?
Good morning, Maria Ponte, Department Director. And there's two items in the Assessor's Office. The first one is to eliminate vacant FTE. It's been vacant since May of 2024. The Assessor's Office has done a workload assessment and determined it is not necessary to fill a position. Do you have any questions on this item before I move on to the next one?
Go ahead and cover that one, too, because they're related.
Okay. And the second request is to reinstate the Assessor's Executive Assistant Position. This was eliminated last year during budget cuts, and it was eliminated not because it wasn't necessary, but because it was vacant. And the request, because of the reorganization, there is funding to absorb the cost of this position, so there is no request for additional funds, including from the general fund. So there is no request for additional funds, um, including from the general fund.
Questions on the appraiser, uh, reading classes? Nope, thank you, thanks, Maria. That brings us to 3K, Public Health and Social Services Setting a Public Hearing on November twenty-fifth for the twenty-twenty-three CAPER Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Webster, good morning.
Good morning, Board. Tom Webster, Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention. So yes, this is a request, this is an annual public hearing we were required to hold um, for our HUD, Department of Housing and Urban Development funding. Um, this needs to be done before the end of December so we can be, submit our report timely. So we are requesting that the board hold their public hearing on November twenty-fifth. Happy to answer any questions.
It's not Thanksgiving, is it?
No. It's two days before.
Hey, Tom?
Yeah?
Years have we been doing this?
Uh, we've had these funds since twenty thirteen.
So, ongoing business.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Next up is L. Sorry, I didn't skip anything. No. 3L, uh, Community Development Block Grant, Critical Home Repair Housing Contracts.
Yes, and these are, are two contracts that were awarded under our twenty-twenty-four Community Development Block Grant Program. Um, they are for South Puget Sound Habitat Humanity for forty-five thousand dollars and Rebuilding Together for seventy-five thousand. Uh, both of these programs will operate in the city of Tumwater and provide um, home repair um, to low-income homeowners. And again, happy to answer any questions.
Does Together do home repairs well?
Um, not to my knowledge, no. Um, they'll do, they provide other supportive services. I'm not aware that they actually do home repair. Um, so this is rebuilding together. There's another organization that works in the Tumwater Schools called Together. What else?
Questions on that item? Nope, okay, thank you. Uh, next one is also Public Health and Social Services Contract with United Way of Thurston County for the twenty-twenty-five Point in Time Count.
Uh, yes, and this is, um, we talked about this last week. We issued a request for proposals to find someone to help us with the twenty-twenty-five Point in Time Count, which is the annual required count of those experiencing homelessness. Um, so United Way was the selected um, applicant or the highest-scoring applicant, and so we're looking to move forward with contracting with them to support our twenty-twenty-five count, which will happen at the end of January.
Questions on Point in Time Contract? Nope, okay.
Great, thank you.
Next up is also Public Health Grant Agreements for Lake Lawrence, Offutt Lake, and Patterson Lake Management Districts.
Right, we have Stuart here. Morning, Stuart.
Good morning.
Stuart, Department of Health Manager. So these are the three grant agreements to support Lake Management District activities on Lake Lawrence, Lake Patterson, and Offutt Lake. Um, Offutt and Patterson are developing, they're already developing integrated aquatica vegetation management plans with a rare environmental, and it made great progress. Lake Lawrence, as you guys saw in the paper recently, had a major issue with cyan, with a microcystin toxin from a cyanobacteria bloom. So they are developing a cyanobacteria management plan. And so these grant funds will be used to basically pay back money they've been spending on the, the project, starting back to January of twenty-four. So we're asking for permission to execute those contracts and have Jen sign them.
Since you bring up that issue, which I did see, then can you kind of talk about what triggers a cyanobacteria outbreak like that?
Um, basically, there's too much phosphorus, you know, available in the lake. If you know the history of Lake Lawrence, um, it has, uh, historically was used for logging and things. There's a lot of nutrients that are in the sediments, and so, um, they become available certain times of year and then.
Because of temperature or what?
Yeah, just temperature changes, things like that, so. Um, and the goal of the cyanobacteria plan would be to find ways to properly lock up that phosphorus to limit those types of blooms from occurring, which is what Long Lake has been doing for a number of years, is controlling the phosphorus with Utes absorb and foslock and things like that, just to, and if you look at Long Lake's history, they're they're, now they're doing much better because of those applications.
And that's really brought about, in part at least, by that logging and milling operation where you've got organic material out, pushed out into the lake, and it's deteriorating, right?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So I guess just, there's a little bit of history on that, since around nineteen hundred, there were sawmills and such, and they used to run those sawmills with steam, steam engines. And what they didn't burn in the steam engines, they pushed out into the lake. And there's places around that lake where the muck is like ten and fifteen feet deep, solid organic material. And the other piece of that is, the Olympia Power Company in the nineteen twenties dammed the lake up and ran the Dishutes River in there for about ten years. And so all the sediment that used to come down and would settle out, uh, down in the saltwater generally settled out in Lawrence Lake, so about ten years of, of that activity as well.
So obviously, Lake Lawrence is in need of some intervention to prevent, and when you're talking about levels of two thousand, that's a danger level, so that if people get exposed to that, we had, it's very rare for people to get sick from these things, but at that level, the probability increases if they're somehow ingesting toxin. And also, the toxin can go airborne, um, and can impact that way. There's literature on that, so. It's good that we're in the process of getting this under control because um, it's not improving.
So Black Lake recently did, or a few years ago, did alum treatment to deal with phosphorus level.
Same thing, yeah.
That's what they're gonna do?
They're just, uh, limiting the ability of phosphorus to enter the water column, basically, from the sediments.
Is that what Lake Lawrence is gonna do?
I don't know. It, it depends on what the plan calls for. There's, there's different options, but there's different, you know, treatments that, that can be used.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Stuart.
Oh, Public Works License and Indemnity Agreement for a private septic line.
Um, we, uh, Matt Anderson, Thurston County Engineer, we discussed this last week. Um, this is simply requesting approval um, of an indemnification agreement, which goes along with the utility permit to install a private septic line across Summit Lake Shore Road, which isn't uncommon um, for, out there, especially on Summit Lake Road, for the house to be on the lakeside of the road and for the drain field to be on the, um, the other side of the road. So obviously, there needs to be a cross connection there. So again, just requesting permission to approve an indemnification agreement.
Any questions on item three O? Nope, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Uh, we have a bunch of appointments now. Um, P is reappointment to Agricultural Advisory Committee. Robert McIntosh, current member, being reappointed. Glenn Shornow, similarly, being reappointed. Uh, let's start with those two. Any questions there? Commissioner Mejia.
Can all the reappointments be moved to the consent agenda?
This is the consent agenda.
Oh, we're still on the consent agenda?
Still.
For some reason, I thought we had moved on to department item.
No, we have 3A through 3V, V as in Victory, Victoria.
Sorry, I heard at one point you said Commissioners off, and so I was like, okay.
Yeah, we added the, um, Capital Lake piece to the, to the department item, but then we jumped back to the consent. So we've got Ag Advisory to, then we've got Capitol Regional Public Facilities District Board, Troy Kirby. Any questions there? No. Then we've got Law and Justice Counsel Kelly Olson, who's a reappointment, and Shelley Willis, who's a new appointment. And then we've got a Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And a Veterans Advisory Board reappointment, our Chair, Bill Powell. Any questions on those quest, those appointments? Nope, okay. So that would be our consent agenda, and then we'll have, um, Department Item 4A. These might get renumbered when we redo the agenda, but in the draft agenda, it's 4A Prosecuting Attorney Agreement for Legal Services. I saw Travis, I believe I have Travis here. You're listed as, this is 4A Presenting, uh, the
Legal Services.
Legal Services Agreement. Is that why you're here?
Yeah. Apologize, I think, um.
You're listed as presenting, uh, stuff.
Yeah, I, I think John was planning to attend, so if there's an opportunity to delay a bit, I'd give him some time to run.
Oh, this morning?
This morning.
Okay.
Oh, there he is. Hey. Look at that. Look.
Said his name.
Time is everything.
Okay, perfect.
Grand entrance.
Right on cue, Mr. Prosecutor, come on up. So we have addressed this a couple of times. It is to, uh, approve an agreement for legal services with an outside law firm uh, based on a, a lawsuit that has multiple defendants, where one, as well as Lot, Tumwater, I can't remember all the different lucky defendants. But I'll let prosecutor over this one with us.
So I, I can just quickly run through the, uh, the ask here. We're looking at, uh, we're asking the board to approve the county manager to enter and, or to, to retain legal services, right? So at this point, prosecutor Toonheim, as you know, he could explain his role a little bit here. Has the, has the role of appointing special deputies. Um, so we're looking for the next step, which is having, um, having outside counsel retained through the county management. And, uh, the, the basic situation here is we have four co-defendants that we'd like to join with. That would be Lot, Tumwater, and the city of Olympia, and then Thurston County before. Uh, and essentially, we're, we're looking at retaining, uh, law lineman, uh, law firm from Jeff Myers as, as chief counsel on this case. And, uh, you know, at a rate of seventy dollars per hour. Uh, but I know this did generate quite a bit of conversation last week, so we thought, um, we, I asked John to, uh, to attend and engage with you all as well if there are additional questions.
Between your words, I know I had questions about kind of what's that line of when we need to go outside versus.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and maybe if I could just make a couple of, uh, first off, comments. This is, my understanding is this is, um, uh, uh, kind of part and parcel to an interlocal agreement that the board either is looking at or has engaged in with the other, with the, with the cities, the other jurisdictions. And the lawsuit is actually, uh, my understanding, being brought against all of the participants to this interlocal agreement. So, uh, in that instance, it makes sense for the, all the participants of the interlocal to join together to essentially create a unified, uh, defense, if you will, through, uh, joint counsel. So, uh, this has been done in, in other instances where we've been in partnership with other jurisdictions, and something in that partnership has, um, coming under, you know, legal action. The seventy dollars, uh, an hour is, uh, I think, of the representation of our share. So the reality is that this is getting split uh, across the board, across all the jurisdictions. So in essence, we're sharing uh, responsibility and then sharing resources to defend the interlocal agreement that you all are, uh, again, either contemplating or have enacted. I'm not sure of the status of the agreement at this point in time. I will say that in taking this particular kind of case on, uh, the lawyer that's proposed, Jeff Meyer, uh, who's actually a former deputy prosecuting attorney in our, uh, shop many years ago, uh, has, uh, particular expertise in this area. I think that's why the jurisdiction selected him. And, uh, the seventy dollars an hour for us in terms of our contribution is actually less money than it would cost me to dedicate one of my lawyers, uh, to the action uh, in terms of the hours, um, that would be spent on it. So from my standpoint, it makes sense to just join the other cities. Take on our share of the, of the defense of the, uh, the ILA and, um, and then I would appoint Jeff as a special deputy prosecuting attorney. So that's my thought. I'm happy to answer questions.
Is there any reason that, because we don't know the dollar amount, I mean, other than the hourly rate possibly? Why couldn't we just have this come out of your budget? And at some point down the road or at the conclusion of it, when you realize how much money you need or how much has been spent, then you can come back and the board could authorize it at that point, and we would know what we're authorizing. Here, we're being asked to authorize something that we really don't know how much it is, and then give you ten percent more if needed, and we don't know how much the ten percent is on, on what. So I just think from a business perspective, it makes more sense, uh, if you, you know, I, I think you've got money left in your budget yet. Take it out of, out of that pot, so we don't have to mess with anything else. You come back in, we can do an adjustment. That's my suggestion.
It's a, it's a reasonable question, and I'll, uh, I, I guess I'll respond a couple of ways. One is just to, you know, make it clear that the defense of this is a defense of the board's action, right? Uh, to, uh, enter into the ILA. And in some ways, that's what obligates us to, that's what makes us a defendant and obligates us to move forward. And in all frankness, um, I'm not budgeted to absorb these costs. I don't have the budget for it. There's no line item in my budget for outside counsel costs. That's why, uh, throughout the years that, that I've been doing this, this is twenty years I've been involved in this, you know, the civil side of the house. Since I was made chief deputy, uh, we've always taken this case by case, uh, to the board and typically used, uh, some non-departmental funding or so forth. The reality is it's, the source of it is all the same place, right? It's all coming out of general fund. If there's, but if there's.
I'd like to have it not come out of general fund. I would rather, if we're gonna figure out a way to pay for this whole arrangement with enterprise services, we're talking about utilizing the stormwater fund.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be coming out of general fund, and we don't know what we'd be taking out of the stormwater fund. We don't even know if we're a hundred percent okay on that yet. So that's why, that's why the problem.
That even makes more sense to me, because my budget is general fund budget. If you're gonna allocate stormwater money, some specialized funding to it, it makes more sense to allocate that directly upfront and to go to outside counsel where it's actually cheaper than what it's gonna cost me in the house.
That makes, that makes sense to me as well.
Yeah. So, so I would, I mean, I would advocate that, again, don't, don't run it through my budget, because my budget is essentially general fund. And then you gotta, you would end up moving, having general fund pay for the litigation, moving stormwater to my budget. To me, it makes more sense just to allocate it straight there.
You wouldn't advise to do that. Robin, you wanna speak to that?
I'm, while it's one thing to, uh, pay for a capital project out of the stormwater fund, I don't believe that we could use that for litigation.
Okay.
Uh, costs, so, and if, uh, the prosecutor were to pay for it out of his budget, then it would just come back to the Commissioner's Office through, uh, rate allocation, because those costs are billed out on the internal service. So we have money in non-departmental for external legal costs. We oughta just charge it there to start with.
I have one question, follow-up question.
Sure.
Um, I think the one point Commissioner Edwards made about the ten percent, uh, is valid, because how are we gonna um, authorize the county manager to not exceed ten percent more if we don't have a, an amount? Is there, like, how would that be handled? Should we put a cap in here and then say, let's have another conversation if we exceed that, or how, how would we handle that?
That seems like stock language that doesn't fit this situation.
Uh, yep, I agree with that.
I think you're right.
Looked at the, just, you know, just the plug-in of like, you know, of contract and authorized amendments that do not exceed ten percent. Ten percent of what?
There's nothing to be ten percent of, so I would maybe just amend that.
Yeah, you're right. It, it.
Typically, we just do this as a retainer agreement, which is a fee-for-service.
If we could just revise the language of that before this afternoon, it's a good catch.
Yeah. We'll just end at county manager to execute the agreement.
I mean, the reality is, we have, uh, if, we wanna come back to looking at costs and so forth, and what the litigation is one of those things you're constantly looking at, right? To see what, what it's costing so far, what it's gonna cost in the future. I mean, it doesn't foreclose us to be able to continue to look at the issue in terms of how we fund the litigation. But to get into it, right now, it's so early, it's hard to know what the future of the litigation looks like. So it's hard to put any kind of number on it. But certainly we can, you know, continue to review it as we go through.
I've heard two lawyers, without going into any details about the advice we got, but that basically said there isn't a, a strategy here that might yield a, um, more quicker resolution of the litigation based on the posture of it and what some of the arguments that might be made in court on the front end.
Yeah, I'd, I'd have to defer to Travis in terms of the legal strategy, but I think there is some, effort and strategy that's gonna be made to try to terminate the litigation as soon as possible.
Yeah, there is a, right now, a pending motion to dismissal that was filed by the state, which I presume the localities would join, and that hearing's set for January first or third. So by the beginning of the, the calendar year, we'd have a better sense of where litigants are and have a chance to make strategic decisions, I think, at that point, to the, to, you know, to John's point earlier.
Is this heard? Where would that case be heard?
Superior Court, so.
Thurston County?
I can't recall what judge is, it's in Thurston County, but I can't, I just offhand can't remember what judge it's assigned at this point.
It's possible they may bring in a visiting judge, but I, I couldn't speak to that yet, I don't think.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I don't think we, that's a possibility, but I don't think it's gone that far.
True. Okay, we took out that ten percent that was muddying it up. Would we wanna add in this that, uh, partners are, we're sharing with, so that that is also in this motion, so everybody knows what the deal is?
So there's a, you're looking for a, a reference either in the contract or retainer agreement or whatever, that we're cost-sharing?
Yeah, we're cost-sharing with Olympia, the port, the state. I don't know who all we're cost-sharing with, but I think it needs to be.
I think we could add.
It would be beneficial to have it in there.
No, no, I, I think I understand you, Commissioner. I think we could add that to the motion, uh, as a descriptor. I think your concern is making sure that the public understands.
Yes.
The arrangement.
Yes.
And I think that would be suitable to take out the ten percent, add something in the motion, uh, to enter, you know, authorizing county manager to retain law lineman for purposes of defending the ILA in partnership with, with the city of Tom Water, Olympia.
And a cost-sharing arrangement with.
Cost-sharing arrangement. I think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
That's the concern. The, the mechanics of it, I just quickly, if I could ask, would you, I think I'm set as the presenter this afternoon. Is that still what, what folks, okay, so I, okay, that, that, that works fine for me. I'll, I'll, uh, present on Zoom and let you all go from there.
Any other questions for the prosecuting attorneys team?
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Appreciate you giving us a little time.
Thank you, Travis.
Yeah. Next department item is Public Health and Social Services contract with Courtside Preservation Associates for affordable housing acquisition. That's you, Tom?
Yep. Thank you, Commissioner Tom Webster again. Um, I will let you know that Jen Freihite will be presenting this after, this item this afternoon to you. I'm unavailable and Alex is out sick today. So this is a request to sign a contract with Courtside Preservation Associates for one million three hundred fifty seven thousand six ninety-nine to acquire Courtside Apartments, um, which is located over near Capital Medical Center in West Olympia. This funding was approved by the Regional Housing Council, uh, earlier this summer under our request for proposal process. And we are moving forward. They've completed all the, we've completed our underwriting and due diligence, so we're ready to move forward contracting. We will be using the county's American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal recovery funds, uh, which need to be obligated before the end of the year. And this is scheduled to close December fifth. So this will preserve two hundred and nine units of affordable housing, um, for the next four years. So happy to answer any questions.
And this is all in partnership and with recommendations from?
From the Regional Housing Council and the Thurston Affordable Housing Advisory Board that supports the Regional Housing Council.
And that's for our whole total locale, right?
Correct. Yep, that's for the Thurston County region.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Tom on five A? Nope. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works Contract Award for Tamishan Water and Sewer Infrastructure Rehabilitation and Replacement Project. Joe Plahuda.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners. Joe Plahuda here, uh, senior water resource engineer with Public Works. Uh, this item is for contract award of the Tamishan Water and Sewer Infrastructure Rehabilitation and Replacement Project. So similar to the last item, um, this is funded through American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal recovery dollars. Um, so looking to get this, this under contract by, by the end of, end of this year. And as, as some context, this is the first of two, two requests that we'll be bringing before the board, um, for, for contract award. So this item was, was sent to, to bid, uh, in September. We opened bids, it's October third. Received seven bids for the project, um, ranging from two point one three million to three point two five million. We're asking here to award to the lowest, uh, lowest bidder, which was Roglands, um, in the amount of approximately two point one three million dollars. So with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Questions on the Tamishan project? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, commission reports, and then we have a public hearing at three thirty. I have not seen that on the calendar. Can you confirm that we're, because it's not appearing, it has not appeared on my.
That's your calendar.
My calendar.
I'll make sure it gets to everyone.
Okay, so the public hearing is regarding Grand Mountain West UGA expansion projects.
Yeah, this is here.
Two. Okay, I'll wait for Ashley.
Good morning again, commissioners. Yeah, the public hearing for this afternoon is for two projects that have been on the docket for a while. The Grand Mountain West, um, UGA expansion, um, conference of plan map amendments and rezone projects. So one of these would be expanding the urban growth area to accommodate industrial development as the Blacklight Core Proposal. Another one would be expanding the urban growth area to allow for multifamily residential development, and that is the Womoski Proposal. Uh, we have received three comments. Two late comments came in, um, right before five o'clock yesterday, as well as one comment from a neighbor. So we'll be bundling any additional comments we have along with those and providing them to you ahead of the hearing this afternoon.
And then once we hear the public comment, it, we don't do anything because it has to be packaged with our.
Yep.
End of the year.
Yep.
Complaint.
So this one, um, these two proposals, as well as the long-term agriculture zoning update, are part of that once-a-year board, um, board action that you can take to up, update the comprehensive plan. So if you feel prepared after the public hearing to give us some sort of indication, um, that you feel comfortable moving it forward into that end-of-year package, that would be helpful because we do have to write the ordinance, um, for whatever, whatever is gonna be coming. Um, it doesn't need to happen today. Um, we do have time. We're scheduled to have the board take that action at your meeting on December seventeenth.
Okay, so twelve seventeen would be the proposed day of action.
Proposed, yeah, at this point, that's what we're looking for. So the last meeting is the year.
Okay. Any questions for Ashley on the public hearing? All right, thank you. Okay. Let's keep moving. Uh, next up is reviewing of the draft agenda for next Tuesday. We do have a meeting next Tuesday, board meeting. That's the first Tuesday of the month. That meeting called to order two P M. Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Commissioner Mejia. And we will approve agenda and then have a proclamation for Veterans Day.
Correct. Uh, for Veterans Day, we will have, um, we've invited members of the Veterans Advice Board, staff for the Veterans Advice Board. Also invited, um, Judge Buckley and Frankie Peters from District Court, who will come and present on Veterans Court. And we will also have, um, a few other guests in attendance.
Okay, and then on Monday, November eleventh, Thurston County, buildings are closed, correct?
Correct.
Any questions on Veterans Day proclamation? Um, opportunity for the public to address the board, county manager's update, anything to highlight there?
Nothing at this time.
We have a proposed consent agenda of three A through three I. Three A is a sheriff's office item, inter-agency agreement for the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force Program. Commissioner C.
Good morning again. Sheriff Dave Fearsaw, and I brought Lieutenant Mike Brooks with me in case there's any specific questions about, uh, about this. What this is, is we wanna enter into an agreement. We already have one, but this is just to, to, uh, continue with it, with the Internet Crimes Against Children, normally called IGAC. It's a task force. Seattle PD is the one that's, uh, organizes it. They send us information when they, when they find things, then we start an investigation down here on our end on, um, anything that involves, um, Internet crimes against children. Go ahead.
Is there a dollar amount associated with this?
No, there's, there's no money. Um, they do have resources that we can use from time to time, depending on what the case needs. This is just basically, they have a way of filtering through different computers and things and finding, um, crimes. And then they'll refer them down to us for the, for the investigations.
I, I guess I'm wondering how come we're even considering this? Why, I mean, it's all great if you wanna do it, but why are we given authority? Doesn't the sheriff have the authority to make these agreements?
Inter-agency agreement, I think we have to have.
It's what?
Inter-agency agreement that we have to have authority from the.
I don't know. I never used to do it that way, so. I'm not aware of that. Then let's just put it that way. I don't know. Maybe council oughta be here and give us some advice.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's before you because, um, council's advice has been to us that we have to bring inter-agency agreements.
Probably because some not in for.
Well, otherwise, you, you could have individual. Into agreements left and right, and the board would have no knowledge. While this has no final, uh, aspects to an agreement.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for?
I have a question. It might, um, seem like it's a given, but just wondering, the cases that are referred to us that we help with, are they Thurston County-specific? Or are we, is it an inter-agency agreement saying we'll support these investigations for crimes against children in the region or how, like, what's the scope of that?
We try to keep those for unincorporated Thurston County, so we typically get them for, uh, people who live in the cities as well. And then we try to give those out to the cities. Tom Water, I think, is getting on board with, uh, this agreement. I think Olympia's a partner as well. So they would get theirs directly, but for instance, we have gotten one for Tonino. And we reached out and tried to provide it to Tonino, but they don't have the capability of handling that and doing the investigation. So we kept that, but it's our county, and then we try to dole them out if it's a, if it's occurring in the city. But for sure, we take all the unincorporated ones.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the sheriff's team?
Thank you, guys.
You have to go to work.
Okay, next up is three B. Tourism Promotion Area Tax Collection Agreement.
Morning, Jannika.
Good morning. Okay, Jannika Machado, Economic Development Manager. Um, I'll provide an overview of the Tourism Promotion Area Tax Collection Agreement. In late twenty twenty-three, Department of Revenue, or D O R, sent a letter to Thurston County stating the county's tourism promotion area was out of compliance under the current law. Many counties across Washington State were found to be out of compliance due to excluding certain types of lodging businesses. Thurston County entered into a temporary collection agreement with D O R in January twenty twenty-four to avoid impacts to the collection fees. Instead of requiring counties to amend their ordinances, a legislative fix was introduced to make technical changes to allowable exemptions from charges for tourism promotion area assessments, uh, amending the R C W and creating a new section. House Bill twenty-one thirty-seven was approved in March twenty twenty-four. Uh, the agreement before you replaces the temporary collection agreement, uh, and this new agreement is effective January first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, P A O has reviewed and signed the agreement, and Department of Revenue has requested the signed agreement to be returned by December tenth. I'm happy to take any questions.
What was the problem with our compliance?
Uh, so we received a letter from D O R that said the law did not class, allow classifications to be determined by lodging business types. And in our ordinance, there were, um, at least one of the disallowed exclusions. So either trailer camps, recreational vehicles, educational institutions, uh, private lodging houses, bunkhouses, guest ranches, or summer camps.
So we were taxing a category that's not allowed to be taxed?
We didn't tax. So we had exclusions, um, and this is what was found across a lot of different jurisdictions. And so, uh, they pursued a legislative fix to this instead of asking all the individual jurisdictions to, um, amend their ordinances.
This was something we were made aware of, uh, last year. I think it was during the summertime, um, and I know, uh, our, Mr. V C B was very active in, in helping us with, with this issue.
Okay. Anything else? Sounds like a kind of something you have to do.
Yes, it's like housekeeping.
Okay, Mike. Thank you so much. Next up is Central Services Request for Proposals for Landscaping Services.
Mornings, Bruce Roban, Central Services Director. Our current landscaping contract for the county expires at the end of this year. Central Services is requesting authorization to issue a request for proposals for landscaping services. Jason, can you cover any specifics?
Good morning, commissioners. Jason Nash, Facility Services Manager. As Bruce said, we're looking to go out for proposals for a new contract for landscaping services at all county-owned buildings. We're looking to have the contract, an initial two-year contract with the option of three additional one-year extensions. The, the rate, this is built into the rates for twenty twenty-five. We're propose, built into the rates is three hundred and twelve thousand dollars based upon the increase of prevailing wage and whatnot. I will add that proposal, or the estimate does not include the potential purchase of the sheriff's new building. So that may drive the cost up higher than predicted. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Does he have any bushes around his building over there?
There is some.
How do you hook that down, maybe? Solve the problem, but I guess that's not the way we do business, I guess.
Okay. Questions on the R P? Nope. All right, thank you. Next up is CPED Pro-Ten Professional Services Contract Approval. Uh, this is regarding Hearing Examiner and Administering Hearings Officer Services. I'll sit back.
Hi. Good morning again. We are very excited in CPED to be bringing this contract before you. This is essentially, um, an opportunity to bring on a second hearing examiner. Right now, we are scheduling our hearings for our development permits, more than two months out. So by having a second hearing examiner available, we will be able to speed up those applications that require a public hearing, or hearing, hearing examiner. Um, the way the billing works for this is essentially, we just get billed directly by the law the time spent on individual hearings, and then that gets passed on directly to the project applicant. So it is budget neutral for CPED in the county.
Any questions on this?
Uh, my question would be, rather than sending things to the hearings examiner, aren't there more things that we could do administratively to prevent that from being a necessity?
Um, all the code updates that we have brought before the board in the last two years. All the code updates that we have brought before the board in the last two years definitely took that into consideration, and you do see more being processed administratively. And any future code updates, like ones that are scheduled to happen with the Critical Areas Ordinance in 2026, we'll take the same perspective and looking for opportunities to shift things from the hearing examiner to staff where it makes sense.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Thanks for being proactive on that, actually.
Any questions?
I think so.
Thank you.
Okay, 3E, Emergency Services. Zol, Z Ventilator. Ben, you always have colorful...
I know, I know, it's amazing.
Products that you bring to our...
Good morning, Ben Miller, Todd, Director of Emergency Services. We'll go with Zol on this one. These are Zol ventilators. As it currently sits, we currently are using ventilators throughout the system that we've had and basically deployed for the last 15 years, mostly in part because we did professional maintenance, warranties, and other components upgrades to these ventilators that really made this equipment last. And so really, I'm looking at both of these next two in partnership. The first one is going through a cooperative purchasing agreement through Sourcewell. This cooperative purchasing agreement and the funds are within the Medic One 24-25 biennial budget, and this cooperative purchasing agreement actually allows us to do an interest-free payment plan, which is actually a benefit to the Medic One levy funds. It allows revenues to increase while locking in the price currently and paying for it over time without interest, and so this is actually a benefit to our taxpayers and the fund to be able to pay this over time interest-free. With that, we are looking for support in that motion, as well as a professional maintenance and service warranty that is sole source because we don't want to void the warranties that are currently in place on these ventilators. And so if you have any questions, let me know.
And that's item F, E and F.
Yes, yep, that's the next one.
Questions for Ben on E or F?
What are the emergency, Ben? What'd they say at the council?
They unanimously supported the biennial budget, which incorporated this in our ERNR projections.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you very much.
We did them together.
Item G is Human Resources Resolution to Reclassify Positions Sheriff's Office Financial Operations Assistant.
Maria Ponte, HR Director. I have two items. The first one is from the Sheriff's Office, and they are requesting to reclassify one of, to approve financial operations assistance positions to the accounting manager position. And the need is, has to do with the increased complexity of financial work resulting from new systems, and it will also have specialty areas that require more oversight, such as payroll and accounts payable, and it will have an increased span of control and create additional capacity to support the Sheriff's Office leadership, allowing for more efficient processes within the Sheriff's Office. HR has reviewed this. In addition, the union reviewed the reclassification request, they have no concerns. This has gone before the Civil Service Commission, which is one of the steps, and bottom line is that there is a need here that HR has verified. In terms of the salary change, it will result in a 40% increase because the financial operations assistant tops out at a little over $5,900, and the top pay for the accounting manager is $8,300, just slightly above that. During the 2024-2025 biennial budget, the commissioners approved the addition of these two FTEs from the Public Safety Sales Tax, and so the increase in budget comes from that fund, and it has been reviewed and verified by the budget team that it can absorb the increase. With that, do you have any questions?
I think that covered my question.
Can you repeat? So it's going from what position to the financial operations assistant? Is that from...
So the approved FTEs, there were two of them, in the classification of financial operations assistant. And, you know, just given time, sometimes during budget, departments and offices will request a particular classification, then when they go to fill it, they realize it doesn't meet their needs, and in this case, they have an increased need for higher-level oversight in a accounting manager position.
Other questions for Maria?
You mentioned that this was due to the increase in financial work with new systems, and I was wondering what new system, is this like TC Connect, or is there something different?
I believe it's just TC Connect. I don't know, is there anything else? We've got the Sheriff's Office representative here.
A lot has to do with TC Connect, as Heidi is as aware.
Okay.
Just increase process, increase workload. I think also with, you know, Public Safety Sales Tax, there's just more things to account for.
Okay. I was gonna, Public Safety Sales Tax makes sense. I'm wondering, because it's, you know, we're asking for this change due to the new system that every department pretty much has to deal with, are we gonna get requests for reclassifications from other departments who have an increased workload because of TC Connect as well?
We don't know of any broad requests being made. We went through the budget process, and other folks didn't submit that, so I can't say in the future we're certain, but at this time, we're not aware.
And one of the things with the Sheriff's Office, they got additional FTEs, so that's part of that increased workload, whereas other departments might have gotten a handful of FTEs, so I don't know that it had the same impacts in their workload. But I haven't heard of any currently.
Okay. I worry about, you know, the impact of TC Connect on all of our departments and offices, and I'm just, if we don't get budget requests from other departments, then okay, but are they just dealing with that increased burden? You know, it's kind of like a trade-off. If they're not gonna come forward and request something additional for support, then are they just increasing their workload without additional resources? And so that's kind of just what's running through my mind as I hear this. And, oh, go ahead.
Would you say that right now, and this is different than the sheriff's request because of, when I said Public Safety Sales Tax, the addition of that increased their staffing, increased things they have to keep track of. So that being said, the increased workload, I think, is, you're accurate. Across the board, folks are feeling increased workload at TC Connect, but some of that is due to system migration. The goal of any system change is that, once you learn the new workflow, once things iron out, this transition, as we've reported in the past, has been difficult for this organization, and we are making progress, but there's still a road to travel, and we'll, over the next several months, we'll continue to look to make progress in this area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There aren't additional questions on this item, I'll move on to the next item, which is... So this request comes from Public Health and Social Services, and they're seeking to reclassify a social services specialist two to a program manager. The request is based on increased workload concerning the substance use disorder, the creation of an opioid abatement council, and the addition of the, oh, sorry, I can't, it's not a word I can pronounce.
Opioid.
Response Task Force. And this highlights the need for Public Health and Social Services to establish a program manager to focus on their ever-growing body for work for Thurston County. Position will be responsible to manage budgets for multiple grants, oversee all expenditures, and handle the overall program manager. HR has done a review and finds that the job duties and responsibilities fit within the requested classification. This is a non-union position, so we didn't have to go through that process. In terms of the salary change, this results in just under a 7% increase at the top of the pay range. It will go from $8,079 to $8,716 per month. And in terms of the budget and funding, two sources primarily fund this position. The first one is the foundational public health under Amendment 16 Task 9, illicit substance use and overdose response. And the second one is the opioid response plan.
You got there, you got there.
Almost. And budget has verified that there is adequate funding to absorb this increase. There is no increased impact to the general fund. Advocacy always gets me, Maria. Several words I cannot pronounce.
Okay, so foundational public health, opioid response, task force, funding, no budget, no general fund budget impact. Questions for Maria?
I guess, even though it's not coming out of a general fund, what fund is it coming out of?
The foundational public health.
Is it one of those mini contracts we get, number 23, 24?
Number 16 Task 9. And so it's under the illicit substance use and overdose response.
So some of that recovery money we got in?
Plus, yeah, opioid settlement funds. It's not recovery funding, it is foundational public health, funding that comes through the state through our consolidated contractor, affectionately known as the CONCON. And this was specifically enabled during that amendment number 16, that recognized the need in communities to...
Those of us that can remember, 16, is that it?
Well, it's, and that's why it's in the description as well, but, and there's also funding now, as you're aware, and we do have a briefing coming up, probably in the not-too-distant future, about the opioid response plan and the opioid abatement council and that work moving forward. But the county is receiving a substantial amount of funding that can go to support services and programs in our community, so this is recognizing all of that.
Okay.
I'll see if I can have somebody else present this next time, so I don't have to say that word again. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
All right, next up is Public Works, setting a public hearing for updates to Thurston County water and sewer fees and charges. Tim Wilson, morning.
Good morning, Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager, Public Works. So this is a request to set a public hearing in support of the budget adoption process. This is specific to general facility charges for the water and sewer utilities, as well as ancillary fees and charges, such as plan review fees, service extension charges, service calls, inspection fees, et cetera, that are outlined in Chapter 1512 of our code, that use the prior year's utility construction cost index and the April Consumer Price Index. So as a reminder to the board, a briefing was held on July 31st, in which proposed adjustments to water and sewer general facility charges, or GFCs, as developed by the FCS Group Incorporated were discussed. The proposed adjustments are in alignment with the board's consolidation of the water and sewer utilities, and supports financial and operational stability of the utilities. This would be a continuation of the community engagement and outreach. On the proposed GFCs, that has included the creation of an informational webpage, direct mailings to all water and sewer customers, and direct engagement with the development community, including Chehalis Tribal Enterprises, Olympia Master Builders, and the Building Industry Association of Washington. And lastly, the Thurston County Utility Advisory Committee, which is comprised of elected representatives from all of the water and sewer service areas, reviewed the GFC study and proposed adjustments, and are supporting the adjustments. And with that, I would answer any questions important.
So how many systems do we have?
We have four different service areas that are now consolidated into one...
We consolidated the rates, four different locations, right?
Correct.
Could you name those off?
Boston Harbor, Tamashan, Grand Mound, and Olympic View.
So we're putting in a bunch of money, I think it's Lost Lake, something, they got some grant money or something. That's not gonna be another one of them, right? And we're not doing Tango Wild and Thompson Place. That's not gonna be part of it.
Those aren't part of our service areas for utilities.
Just those that you mentioned?
Correct.
That was that whole consolidation thing last summer?
Correct. Thank you.
Anything else for Tim?
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Next up is Department Item 4A, Emergency Services Intergovernmental EMS Contracts for Paramedical Services, Eighth Medic Unit.
Ben's getting set up, just wanna thank Ben for his hard work and diligence, all the stakeholders, doing a great job communicating and touching base with folks. Thank you, Ben.
Absolutely. That was it, right? Good morning again, Ben Miller, Todd, Director of Emergency Services. Before I start this one, I really would like to call out the teamwork that was involved in this effort. This teamwork spanned not only those that are in this room, the Budget Office, many of the departments. It also spanned Medic One, it spanned Geodata, it spanned the Budget Office, the Commissioners' Office, Fire Chiefs Association, Fire Commissioners Association, EMS Council, Operations Committee, City of Tomwater, and this doesn't list everybody that was involved and touch the amendment that you're reviewing today. I think it's another, as we go through this amendment, I think it's important to remember that this was a promise that we made to our taxpayers, that when we sent out the informational pamphlet informing them of the process for going to a stair-step process and restoration of the EMS levy, one of those items was an eighth medic unit to be placed within the county. So not only did this touch over 100 people within our community, it's also fulfilling a promise to our stakeholders, our taxpayers, our citizens, our residents, within this community, in better support of their EMS service. I'm gonna read through a couple things quickly, just because I feel like this one's fairly important, and because I know I'm last on the docket, and I have your undivided attention. So this is Amendment 5 to the Intergovernmental Agreement for Paramedic Services with the City of Tomwater, and is a culmination of 18 months of budget sustainability analysis and biennial budget development, data analysis and drive-time analysis, internal and external stakeholder collaboration and presentations, committee recommendations, and contract negotiations. Following presentations to EMS Council's Operations Committee and stakeholder groups throughout spring of 2024, Operations Committee voted in favor of the recommendations to place the newest medic unit at Tomwater Station 2. It is important to note that the proposed amendment is within Medic One's appropriated budget for the 24-25 biennium. The current appropriated budget was recommended by the EMS Council Budget Committee, was unanimously recommended for adoption by the EMS Council to the Board of County Commissioners, and was unanimously adopted by the Board of County Commissioners for the 24-25 biennium. The budget is sustainable in the 10-year plan, and what's hot off the press is that the EMS Council has unanimously recommended this current amendment for the City of Tomwater unanimously to the Board of County Commissioners, as well as the City of Tomwater has already voted unanimously in favor of this amendment as well, in support of the eighth medic unit in Thurston County. With that, I'd love to open it up for any questions, but this has been a lot of hard work by a lot of people throughout this community, and I'm proud to present this as a very, very, very favorable option for increasing emergency medical services in Thurston County.
And everyone gets a clap on that.
You know why that's all unanimous all the way around? It's because you've got an aging demographic in Thurston County.
Oh, that's part of the presentation, and I'm glad you saw the presentation, as to why we need an eighth medic unit, but, yes.
And I think you ought to brag a little bit about the excellent service that we get in Thurston County compared to a lot of others. I mean, we're way, way ahead of normal.
Mr. Spencer has experience, though.
I have experience. Thank you, Ben. Any other questions or comments? Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Standing items. I think we're close to the end of this agenda, so let's, if you don't mind, we'll just plow on. Since we're taking a break, proclamation and awards is next. Clerk of the Board?
Good morning, Commissioners, Clerk of the Board, Amy Davis. At this, next Tuesday, November 5th, we have our last proclamation of the year for Veterans Day. The Veterans Advisory Board and staff have been invited, along with Judge Buckley and Frankie Peters. They'll be in attendance to jointly accept the proclamation.
Amy, have you given, have you been given heads up that there's a proposal for next year to consider a prairie-related?
Yes.
Yeah, we received that.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to make sure you got that so that we can discuss it at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
When will we discuss for next year, proclamations?
Amy and I are chatting about that, and we'll work with the chair and ring that before the board. Hopefully, next week, I think we're going to connect. Get into that time.
Yeah.
After Halloween, it's like a quick sprint to the end of the calendar year.
Advisory Boards and Commissions is next.
I have no updates at this time.
Any questions for the clerk? It's like we're doing a, getting caught up here this afternoon.
Yeah, yes.
A whole bunch of appointments. It's good. And then Commissioner Items.
I have one actually related to the agenda for today. I came in just after we got through Consent Item A for the reimbursement contract with the City of Tonino. And when we went over this last week, I had the thought, I know Commissioner Forney is not here today, but he spoke on this item really articulate, like he was, he really kind of hit on the points for why this is important to Tonino. And I actually had a meeting with some constituents from South County last week who had concerns about the resources available to Tonino and, you know, just, it was really interesting to hear from the perspective of South County residents how they feel like Tonino is under-resourced. So I was wondering if we could move that item to the business agenda, or department items, I mean, so that it gives somebody the opportunity to kind of speak to that a little bit, since there is some community interest in that item.
Who would speak to it? Wayne's not here.
Well, it would be the undersheriff, according to the agenda. I know Wayne's not here, which is kind of a bummer, but I think having someone who could speak to it would be good for the public to hear.
Should that be something that's moved at the start of the meeting at this point, since the agenda's been posted?
Right. There can still be a determination now.
Okay.
That way, we can give the Sheriff's Office a heads up.
Yeah, you have a right to remove it. It's just a matter of who would be here to, you know, we can't necessarily be sure that the Sheriff's Office has a representative available, but we can certainly inquire. And either way, you could, we could give it, make it a department item.
Okay. Would my seatmate support moving it to department items if there is somebody available?
Yeah.
I don't have any heartburn particularly, but we pretty well put this one to bed, and Wayne talked about it the other day.
If no commissioner, if any commissioner does not want to be on consent, it comes off consent. Has to be unanimous approval. Keep somebody on consent. I know you're just asking our opinion, but you have that latitude. Just, we're not sure, we wouldn't necessarily know if.
Who is an undersheriff spot available? Can we, before you do it, before we put it on there, before we decide, shouldn't we know if somebody's going to be here to speak?
We can round up with the sheriff. Again, you'd have to take action at the beginning of the meeting to move it, and so.
You could zoom in, too, as well.
Yeah, you can get that information. And I think just for those watching, Commissioner Forney is representing Western Washington. He's a Western Washington rep on the state jail modernization task force, and that's why he's not available.
Can that be said this afternoon? Just be clarified that he's out representing the county?
Sure. Because, yeah, he's.
Yeah, I can make that.
I'll get you the exact language if you don't have to.
Jail Modernization Task Force, Western Washington?
Yep, Western Washington rep on the state's jail modernization task force.
With the Ruckelworth, Ruckelworth.
Ruckel House.
Ruckel House people, yeah. I don't know if they've got a good history of coming up with solutions. At least not that I've gotten involved in.
That aside, Amy and I will check with the sheriff to make sure someone's available so that then you can make the decision of the.
Okay, so just let us know, and then Commissioner Koss, you can decide at that time if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else for a Commissioner item? All right, we're at the end of the business agenda, and we're in, not recess, we're adjourned until our meeting at 2:00 PM.